Today, we're having a special meeting, March 20th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. Call to order at 10:00 a.m. For the reason is to get more information and more of an update on the coronavirus disease 19. Plaid of legions, is Jim Gilio on the line?
Yes, he is. Jim?
Okay. Supervisor Patel, you would like to lead us off?
Okay, I'm sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark?
Yeah, I just want to have a moment of silence. Last night or this morning, we lost a big figurehead here in Hollister in San Benito County. Marty Richmond was an outspoken person. He was someone that was incredibly important and believed in what he fought for. In the last two years, I was fortunate enough to become a good friend of his, and he became a mentor. So please, think of him, his wife Joyce, and his kids in this time. I appreciate it for just a moment of silence. Thank you.
Can someone unmute Jim? He's muted.
He has been unmuted, supervisor. We just need to identify them.
Okay. Good. Sorry.
So before we continue, Dulce and Janet, have we gotten the...
Mr. Chairman, Jim Gilio, here. Just wanted to let you know that we're having some technical problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, are you on the line as well?
You might want to do roll call.
Okay. We're going to do roll call. Janet?
Gilio?
Here.
Hernandez? Patel?
Here.
Medina?
Here.
Bellacri?
Present. So we have quorum, right? Okay, quorum has been established. Okay. Could I have an acknowledged certificate of posting?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Which telephone number are you?
We're going to go to closed session now?
No, that was just a marker. That was actually a way to establish the executive order. Executive Order N 2520. So that's, we're not going to be going into the closed session in the beginning.
Okay, we're not. Okay. Before we continue, can, let's take a quick two-minute break and try to solve the technical issues.
If we could ask everybody on your guys' end to mute their line, and so we can have the supervisors be able to talk when needed, please?
N 2920 concerning social distancing and joining us mainly through, via Zoom. This is only our second time that we actually are using this, so please bear with us. We're, I'm sure, going to be going through a few more hiccups with this. We're still going through some testing phases to make sure that we have a smoother meeting via the Zoom and with technology. Since our last coronavirus meeting, there's been much change within our county, the state, and the federal government. We just felt that it was very important that we keep you, the public, up to date with what is happening within our community and within the state. Today's agenda will cover updates concerning the coronavirus, updates from the state and county. Also, I'll have here is our Health and Human Services Director, Tracy Belton. She'll be presenting a coronavirus update. And secondly, I'll introduce our new PIO to your board and the public, and he will, he has a section on unified communication. And then lastly, we're going to be addressing the county operations and with regards to the amount of staffing that we have, our required staff that needs to be here, the essential staffing. So with that, we'll be covering social, we'll be covering actually PPE, status of office hours, essential staff, also two lobbies, office closures, and what we're doing with parks, with moving actual programming through RMA Office, and so on and so forth. So we're going to highlight some of those things, so that way the public understands what offices are open and how they can reach appropriate staff to keep business moving forward in local government here in the county. So with that, I'd go ahead and like to turn this over to our Health and Human Services Director, Tracy Belton.
Thank you. Good morning. So I just have a brief presentation, since we just did a presentation earlier this week, just to give some updates that, some changes that have occurred. First, I just wanted to kind of give some updated data. This is as of last, yesterday at 11:43. The county still only has five cases, fortunately. Two are recovered, one death and two active. The two active cases are in home isolation, so that is good news for our county and hoping it'll stay that way. In California, these, these numbers are increasing by the second, but right now, California's showing 904, and you can see the numbers, the United States, 11,238, and globally, a large number. We're hoping that we're going to see a decrease in these numbers, or at least a slow in this number. We wanted to put out some local testing guidance, because it seems that there's a lot of questions, a lot of people concerned and wanting to be tested. So I'll touch on these briefly, but we will make this PowerPoint available on our website as well, so people can look through this. But if you think you've been exposed or had direct contact with somebody who's tested positive for COVID-19, or you have symptoms of COVID-19, you should first call your healthcare provider immediately. We ask that you do that to not increase the calls to the local hospitals, because they are impacted severely. And so if you have a local healthcare provider, please contact them first and triage your symptoms with them. The CDC current criteria to be screened for COVID-19 is you have a cough, difficulty breathing, a fever of 100.4 or higher, and persistent pain or pressure in the chest. And that's what they're going to ask you when you go to the hospital or call the hospital as well. The recommendations are to stay home if you believe you've been exposed to someone testing positive for the virus. Even if you're not showing any symptoms, stay home when you're sick, especially if you have respiratory illnesses or some type of compromised immune system. Monitor yourself for fever, cough, and shortness of breath. Testing of asymptomatic persons is highly discouraged. Many people are experiencing other viral infections, such as the flu, which is creating a little bit of hysteria, because people think that it's the COVID-19, and it could just be the regular flu. Our Public Health Services has received many negative test results for COVID-19 locally, so that's a good thing. And our Public Health Services is in constant contact with the hospital and first responders for consultation and coordination of COVID-19 exposures. Most recently, the one death that we had in our county, some firefighters and AMR staff were exposed to the individual who tested positive. So we're working with them to ensure those people are taken care of. So we do have a shelter in place. As of March 18th, our county entered into a shelter in place. San Benito County acted swiftly and ordered a shelter in place prior to the state ordered shelter in place. Homeless individuals are not subject to the order, but are urged to find shelter. A little bit later in the presentation, I have some slides on some services for the homeless in our community. The county and city have received numerous calls on nonessential businesses being open. We ask that the businesses in the community comply with the order and adhere to it, so it doesn't create more work for our county partners. We're asking the public to voluntarily comply with the order. While violation of the health order could be enforceable as a misdemeanor, that is an absolute last resort. This is not about a criminal justice approach, it's a public health issue. So we listed some of the examples of nonessential businesses. Gyms and fitness centers, hair salons, any service industry, movie theaters, dance studios, martial arts studios, auto sales, auto dealerships, amusement parks, golf courses, clothing stores, bookstores, smoke shops, other retail industries, bars, nightclubs, and industries manufacturing non-related to essential functions. They are listed in the order as well, and there are some gray areas. So if there are concerns or gray areas, they should reach out to our office, which our number is on here, or just refer to the order. It's pretty self-explanatory in the order. Yes, sir?
Just a real quick question. Do we follow our local order or the order the governor had yesterday?
So we're still researching that? That's okay. I believe that our county council is reaching out to find the answer to that. I think it's best practice to follow both.
Yeah. Yes, as far as the latest discussions this morning, that if ours is more, you follow the one that's most restrictive. So if ours is more restrictive, then you'd want to follow ours. I believe ours is more specific, for sure, than the state. It's easier for public, I think, to understand it and read it, but you want to follow the one that's the most restrictive.
So basically, we're saying, follow our local order? Thank you. Sorry about that, Tracy.
So the next slide is just some California updates. As you're aware, the governor did issue a statewide shelter in place order with no duration specified in the order. This will be enforced by now, by social pressure. The governor did, stated that the directive is necessary to ensure that we mitigate the impact of COVID-19 and disrupt the spread of the virus. He also did take some emergency actions to authorize $150 million in funding to protect homeless Californians. $100 million will be, will be provided to cities, counties, and continuums of care through the HHAP program. Entities that receive the funding, which our county did receive the funding, will receive a portion of the funding. $50 million will be utilized by the California Department of Social Services to support local work on isolation capacity for homeless individuals in hotels, motels, and trailers. The $50 million can be spent by DSS on behalf of local jurisdictions. Our deputy director, Enrique Areola, is currently working on securing some individual sites in the event that we do have a homeless individual that tests positive for COVID-19.
Tracy, the labor camp doesn't open until May 30th. Why can't we house the homeless up until that day and maybe work with the governor to see how we can have a smooth transition after that day?
It's definitely something we could explore. When we had the flood, we did house some people out there, so it's something that we could explore, and I'm sure that Enrique is looking into it. If he hasn't, I will ensure that he does.
Okay.
So there's some federal funding updates. Family First Coronavirus Response Act, Phase 1, $950 million was directed to CDC to carry out surveillance and different, different things to help with preparedness and response activities. CDPH just recently released guidance to local health departments, and our county was allocated $192,291 that will, that will be accessible to us for these services. So that's good news. This is just Phase 2. It has different things that will be provisions of interest for our local health department, so we'll be following these closely. And then there's a Phase 3 of the same act. It's related funding measures to be prepared for by the Senate Republicans, and it's expected to be released yesterday, I believe was the 19th. So we'll have to follow up on this to see where we're at with that. There's been so many moving pieces, that it's really hard to follow where we're at with this, but we will ensure that we look into this as well. So there's been a lot of concern and questions around the homeless community. Our Homeless Resource Center is open still. It is operated through a contract with homeless communities, Community Homeless Solutions, excuse me. They've taken a proactive role to address the shelter in place order as a result of COVID-19, and some of the things that they've done is we've expanded the operations to be open 24/7, so they're no longer closing until the order is removed or deemed appropriate. We were open only from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., but now they're open 24 hours, so they can stay there during the day and do some activities to prevent them from going out into the community, being exposed to other elements. The shelter capacity will remain the same, 28 males and 22 females in separate living areas. We also have a couple extra cots in the event that we increase. All efforts will be done to maintain social distancing at least six feet apart. If there's a need to isolate a shelter guest, we don't have an available room or unit at this moment, but we're in the process of securing a two-bedroom unit, which will be designated for this purpose. We hope to secure the unit by next week, and we're exploring...
Supervisor Patel?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When homeless people come in, are we checking their temperature or...
We have a screening, yeah. They are doing a screening mechanism. They have a whole plan that they're following. I can't say for sure they're checking their temperature. It might be on my next slide. I don't, no, it's not. But there is a whole plan, if you guys would like to see that. We do have it available, but we met with them to ensure, and I can't remember if temperatures were. I think they're just triaging them based on symptoms.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So some services that are available. We do have limited hotel vouchers available that are provided through our community services and workforce development. There is a need for additional funding for those rooms, so if we can tap into some of the funding that we've just received, we will try to do that. And then securing the hotels will be the second area that we'll be working on in this community. There's not, because of the shelter in place, there's not a lot of people coming into our hotels, so that will leave us a little bit more accessibility to try to secure some rooms with local hotels. Transportation, the County Express has suspended the need for token use, so any individual can ride the County Express for essential trips. So the same essential needs that are in our order are also available through the County Express, so their number is there. The City of Hollister has placed portable restrooms and handwashing stations at the following locations to increase for the homeless to be able to wash frequently, and so that's an awesome thing that they did to help benefit our community. And then food distribution. Linda Lampe from My Father's House is continuing to provide food. She has a distribution daily from 1:00 to 2:00 at Dunn Park, and she also goes to other locations that she wasn't quite comfortable identifying, but people can reach out to her and call her, and she will bring them food. Unfortunately, we didn't list her number on here, but I can put, I can add it later. The Food Bank is still open for business. They are doing drive-through Fridays and Saturdays from 9:00 to 12:00. This morning, the line was around our building, so there definitely, people are utilizing the service. If you don't have a vehicle, you can still walk up, but they're encouraging drive-through, so you can, you don't, there's no, you don't have to have any close access to the staff.
If they need volunteers, where can the people call to see if they can volunteer?
So if you look on their website, I believe that they sent out an email blast this week requesting volunteers for this weekend to help bag food, and it's on their website. I can list their number on here as well, for sure. Also, the Salvation Army on Buena Vista Road does, is doing drive-through food pickups on Thursdays at 11:00 a.m. So there's some new websites available for resources. The State of California, Governor Newsom introduced this website last night. It's at the bottom on our website. We worked with GIS, yes, and they created a new dashboard for us. It's on our website. It looks really great. It has some graphics in it, and so I encourage everybody to take a look at that. We're trying to get everything posted on there as quick as possible, so I would encourage people to look at that. And that concludes my presentation. Those are some other resources, our website again, and then the 211 service. We have been updating them regularly. People are using it, because our system's been delayed, so that's a good thing, because people are accessing the system for service, so that's a good thing. So just keep utilizing their service.
Question. What are we doing about the jail?
What are we doing?
Yeah, because all it takes is one inmate to get sick and...
So, yeah, we're going to actually highlight that. I'll highlight that on the third part of the presentation. Mr. Chairman, defer that.
Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim.
Jim?
Hi, Jim.
Hi, sorry, this isn't specifically for Tracy, but I figured as the presenters are coming up, I had a couple of comments to make. Number one, I wanted to say thank you to all of our team members. Everybody's working extremely long days, working in conditions that are unfavorable, and I really appreciate everything you guys are all doing. Thank you so much. And then a couple of issues that have come up for us over the last couple of days that maybe depending on who comes up, they can answer the question, or perhaps we can look into things. The wireless alert system, we're learning about access to that and how we get better access to that, so we can make sure that everybody in our community knows. I know it's hard to believe, but there are some people that actually are on social media still today, and not everybody has got the message regarding the shelter in place, so I'd like to see if there's anything else we can do to get that out there. I wanted to thank our new PIO, David Westrick, for working creatively to get NICSIL going, and also Code Red and all the different alerts that we've been doing. I'm that, that's one. Two, and I know Ray, I think I heard you say you're an aggressive PPE for our staff, and making sure that they have the gear that they need for the essential places that are still open, so that they're protected and safe. And then emergency supply update, is, are we, are we working on securing any type of emergency supplies, or is that something that's planned for the future? And is there a trigger point that would ensure us to do that? I know this morning, I was working with Edgar, he's reaching out to the, they, a letter to request items specifically from the governor to be brought to San Benito County. Communication with the public, if you guys need any other tools, or how's that going? Quick update. We know our PIO, new PIO, we have other PIOs in other departments, got thrown into the fire the last couple of days, so maybe when he gives an update, if there's any tools that they need, or technology, or assistance, or ability to help that go smoother, so we have a real focus, central point of contact, that would be great, unified messaging, so to speak. And then one other thing, and I promise it's my last thing. I was reaching out to a lot of farmers in the area about donations for, you know, like the food bank, because what's happening, what we're noticing, is in the industry is a lot of restaurants are closed, so there's a lot of unused produce right now. One of the concerns, I guess it's from past history, is, you know, let's say a farmer A donates, you know, 300 boxes of romaine lettuce, or whatever they have, and somebody happens to get sick because that lettuce was not handled properly somewhere in that donation line. Is there a way that either county council, or perhaps at a higher level, I don't know how quickly something like this can happen, or if it's even practical for this emergency? But it's, you know, you have a first responder law, if you're giving somebody CPR, you know, kind of a understanding that you're, as long as you're giving your best effort, it was a true emergency, that you can't be held accountable for something that goes wrong in the first aid process. So if there's anything we can do to help reassure people, I think we could probably even get more food donations coming in. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
If I can just comment on that, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, we have that as part of our second and third phase of our presentation. We're going to provide a PPE update, a tech update, a letter update that we've, that has been drafted, as well as elaborating a little bit more on essential services, as well as office hours. So there's quite a bit there that we're going to be talking about in the next few minutes.
Okay. All right. Next phase of the program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to go ahead and invite up our new PIO, David Westrick. David has been helping us. He's hit the ground literally running, I'd almost say flying. First day of work, there was a lot going on for him and for our county as a whole, so he's done a fantastic job up to this point, and we really appreciate you coming on board and helping us out. So he is going to be discussing Unified Communications and some of the things that he's actually working on right now. Thank you, David.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm going to go through some bullet points here, and you can ask some questions if you need to. There's quite a few, but some of them already been covered. As you know, the PIO's office is up and running, and we're working out of the OES office. I have to say, just kind of pause here, that I'm really impressed with the staff of this county, a bunch of professionals, and they're really dedicated to the mission. The CIO's office is actually scheduling upgrades for technology at OES. We need a couple of things over there, and that's, that's going to happen, actually, to assist in the mission capabilities of OES and the PIO. I've attended a couple of council meetings, both at San Juan Batista and City of Hollister since doing this. I've contacted every news source, actually, and media press in our area, to make sure they knew who I was, they knew that I was the guy to contact. Continuing on, I created a media list for the county, and I've copied that list to the CIO's office, in case of my absence, obviously, of course, if we need to get something out. And I really think that the, if you haven't seen the dashboard that staff created, it's absolutely amazing. They did a great job, and really helps with Public Health's mission to get facts out there. Working with Public Health myself, they're an amazing resource. I think that's probably the press right now. It was the press. We now have NICSIL, and what NICSIL is, is a, an alert system through, push notifications through our phones. You know, the sheriff's office has NICSIL, but what we kind of plan to do with it is use it for this public health emergency, anything going forward that has anything to do with, related with law. So law has theirs, and we'll use ours for OES stuff, but pretty much the idea being that we have some information we think that might have to go out soon, at some point, we'll use that from the OES office as well, to create that first point of contact. On that contact, which I think is super important in information sharing, one of the things that we think is really important is those folks that do not have technology, that don't have access to the internet. And so what Public Health did is create a really just amazing one-page resource guide. They're going to have that translated to Spanish as well, and staff at Elections has sort of volunteered to be the tip of the spear and get that out to everybody on their roles as well. And then we're going to arrange for it to be given out to the homeless population, the shut-ins, some of the elderly, work with Hoveness, maybe Community Food Pantry and Salvation Army, to give that out, to make sure that everybody has the resources that they can, that they can access if they need to do them for this crisis. We had a really great status meeting this morning. I think they do those board meetings, I mean, they do the staff meetings anyway, but the status meeting this morning was really about COVID-19, and the entire staff of departments got together and gave brief status reports. We kind of want to go ahead, starting from today on, and do those sort of regularly, so we know that where we're at with our department and countywide, as far as resources, needs, wants, any requests internally or externally, and really any incidents. So we all have a unified sort of messaging that we can put out there from either the Ray's office or the PIO's office. Take any questions at all you have now.
Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, David.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Actually, hold on, Peter. Supervisor Patel?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, thank you very much. Like the CIO said, you hit the ground running, phenomenal speed, just, we identified what we needed, and you came on the job the next day and tackled it, and that was pretty impressive. Is there anything that we could be doing, assisting you as far as tools or what have you? I hope you have everything you need to do your job completely, and get the information out to the public in the fashion that... and get the information out to the public in the fashion that you're doing right now. That's the way that, in this emergency, the message is concise, coming from, you know, one source. That's a whole lot better than what was happening before. Is there anything else that you possibly would have a requirement for?
I appreciate the question, and I think there is actually just one thing, but just a comment. I think I do have everything that I need, and when I have a request, staff or the CA's office is just right on it real quickly. So that's really not an issue. Resources is not an issue here. What I would ask the electeds and appointed folks around our whole community is that we do speak with one voice. We have the same information. Public Health is putting out great information that is on point and on track. Please, if you have social media, if you have constituents that you contact, use that resource they're putting out as the source for our community. That's all I would ask.
Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I was trying to write down my notes right now. I appreciate the board's support of our PIO, and I appreciate Chief Westrick being our PIO, since I know he already has a pretty strong following. He has a lot of people that are engaged with him. And he has, you know, definitely, when it comes to the Facebook world, a way to get people to get engaged. And I, now in this time, and the more I think about it, one thing I definitely wanted to mention is that I support our chief to basically be the conduit for all the messages. Because right now, one of the things that's been really kind of frustrating me is there's so much sentiment that it's kind of created just this world of a lot of information. A lot of it is opinion pieces. It's, you know, it's a lot of people basically creating their own outcomes based off of these opinions, and all of a sudden you have a lot of people basically, to a certain extent, creating a lot more, it's making it worse. The public's getting more riled up, more anxious. There's a lot of assumptions out there, and personally, I feel like that's actually destroying the opportunity for the PIO to be successful with his message. So if there's a way for us to kind of, you know, to encourage our PIO, to support him with anything like Supervisor Gilliam mentioned that he needs, but just the same somehow create a conduit to connect all the messages that he has to all the other agencies that might be able to share that same message, whether it's the Chamber, the HDA, or, you know, the Business Council, yeah, the Business Council, the Community Foundation, other organizations, it's important basically spreading that same message. And when we start to repeat the same message, then I think we're gonna get a lot more of it, a lot better of an outcome, because there's gonna be a better following, a better, you know, people are gonna be able to have a reliable source. And that's really what Chief Westrick mentioned. And the last thing I wanted to share, Mr. Chair, is I think if there was a way for the chief to engage in doing what he does best, and that's getting people to think about how to better themselves, how to think positive, how to be productive, and to a certain extent, loving your neighbor, which I know that he's done some really good stuff on that. I think it really creates an opportunity for us to really try to change the culture from dissing gays or overly anxious to trying to use that energy in a productive way. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the next item on our agenda that's, that we're gonna be highlighting for you is just a quick update with regards to county operations and how it relates to the coronavirus, dealing with essential operations. So I'm gonna go ahead and start this off. I'll say a few things, and I'm gonna hand it off to Edgar, our deputy CIO, and he's gonna elaborate further on other things. The first thing I want to mention is, is office hours. I'm gonna just highlight that briefly, and Edgar can elaborate further. With that, we've actually have modified every single department hours. Probation, I'm gonna go ahead and label this and state this for the record. Probation is modified, it's 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Modified lobby for social media, or social distances, excuse me. DA modified, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, modified lobby for social distancing. Child support modified, closed. COG modified, closed. They're closed. Library has closed. UC extension closed. Assessor closed. County Council closed. RMA closed. Behavior Health has been modified, 8:00 to 5:00, modified lobby for social distancing. Treasure Tax modified, 8:30 to 12:00 PM, modified lobby for social distancing. Ag modified, closed. Auditing closed. Library closed. Administration is modified, modified only for lobby for social distancing. HHSA modified, 8:00 to 5:00 PM. Lobbyed is modified for social distancing. Technology is obviously practicing social distancing. The sheriff's office is closed. That's the Juvenile Hall is restricting entrance to the facility. And jail and lobby has been modified. Lobby open to the public, modified for social distances. And jail modifications, the jail modifications are as follows. They have eliminated visits for the jail. They've increased their screening, and they're practicing the proximity or the social distancing. And there's quite a few other things with regards to the sheriff's office as well. Just highlight one more. We got a report from our sheriff this morning, a coroner. Basically, they're just taking extra precautions when they address individuals that they have to pick up. And most of the offices I mentioned, most offices have the ability for people to contact. So there's information, they can actually contact them, they can actually do work on the phone. RMA has, is still making appointments and addressing their operations. So almost, actually, all offices are doing the same thing. The library has, has actually looking at doing more online services. They are closed, but they're still providing services for the public. And we can elaborate further on each one if need be. One of the things I wanted to mention as well is that there, it's kind of a, an element or a segment of this is our landfill. We are a joint partner with them, with Waste Connections. And I wanted to make sure the public and your board is aware of this. I actually met with the landfill. They're still open today, regular hours. There is a household hazardous waste event Saturday that has been canceled. This Saturday and Sunday, they're gonna continue to allow self-hauling waste to the landfill. But they are asking and requesting the public to pay, using their credit card, for social, to address social distancing. So I wanted to make sure that the public and you are aware, they're not accepting cash. Again, this may change in the future. I just wanted to make sure that as of right now, these essential services of actually addressing the local pickup will continue. It's just a self-haul that they may have to change here in the future, depending on what garbage is coming in, if it's actual daily garbage. Especially for those, just so the board is aware, especially for District 4 and some of the districts that actually have more rural lands where they do not have pickup, people need to bring in the trash. That is, they're working on making sure that's still available for the public with that. And we also are gonna discuss PPE. There's a lot to talk about with this, but I'll go ahead and defer some other things. I know we have our sheriff's department here as well that may be able to highlight a little bit further, since I just talked about it. Captain Taylor, would you mind coming up and just highlight a couple more things? Or are you guys gonna, tech team? Good deal. So just, they can elaborate a little bit further on what was discussed with you right now. So I have Edgar, our deputy CIO, here.
Good morning, board, and members of the public that are online. I just wanted to start with thanking our entire workforce that has been working tirelessly to keep the county afloat. I know this is different times, and we're asking everybody to do more with less. And I just wanted to convey that to our, to the board and our employees, just thanking them for stepping up to the plate during these difficult times. I wanted to share with, with members of the public and the board. We made some changes to our website. We now have a graphic of COVID-19 when you go to our main website, which directly links you to the Public Health Coronavirus website. I also wanted to share the dashboard that was created by RGIS. It's a really interactive, amazing dashboard that we're trying to push out. All information is there. We've also have reached out to the city of San Juan Batista and the city of Hollister to get some more information here on the government facility closings. As we get more information, we'll be updating this daily. Also, HHSA has made this table. This is how they're gonna disseminate information to the public also. We partnered with 211 to get information to the public. Also, we are working with 211. If businesses were to need help, 211 will be able to provide small businesses with direction. We're working with the EDC to provide more help on that. Back to PPE, from our last board meeting, we got some clear directive, and the county, the well-being of our employees is our highest priority, and our well-being and health. So we have purchased $85,000 worth of PPE equipment. Our OES office has worked tirelessly to get supplies. As all you know, supplies are in short demand, so I want to commend the OES office for getting those supplies and getting them here. And given the circumstances, we bought 120 safety glasses, 1,000 face shields, 1,000 masks, 600 units of disinfecting wipes, and 1,200 units of hand sanitizer. So we're gonna direct all of our employees through department heads. If any PPE equipment is needed, to contact OES office, and we'll provide that. We're also looking at additional vendors to provide more PPE equipment in the event that we run short. Also, I wanted to inform the board that we have worked, in administration, to work with our current janitorial services to expand that contract. That contract should be coming to your board on Tuesday. However, we already started ramping up those services now. Cleaning service, or we ramped up more. It's now disinfecting and cleaning of all county facilities every day. Part of our essential operations, we've asked department heads to identify those essential employees, and those employees that are essential or deemed essential, we're trying to work with a telecommuting and buying more infrastructure for IT to have those people working at a remote location if possible, if given their scope of duties. The folks that are coming in, we are promoting social distancing, using of technology to do their job. Just at Zoom, this is the meeting today. We're incorporating technology to best use and best facilitate our operations. Our IT infrastructure, IT has been tirelessly working with our vendors to get more laptops. On Monday, we should be getting another 40 laptops to then give out to employees and using our VPN services to be more tech-friendly. Also, with the help of our PIO, we've created a NICSIL for employees. We'll be disseminating that information to our employees. It's a volunteer system. We're asking employees to sign up with NICSIL in the event that we need to contact them. That is something immediate, that can't wait for an all-staff email or mass email in the event of an active shooter, or if we needed to relay any information that can't wait for an email. Or in the event that email would go down, we have one, a mechanism to contact all employees. So I wanted to commend our PIO officer for getting that in place. Also, the county is conducting a survey for small businesses that have been impacted by the shelter in place. We disseminated that information to our EDC and our small, our other business partners, and through our social media channels. Get some, I'll go some highlights on what departments have done to do, to, in order to better do services through COVID-19. I just wanted to invite Captain Taylor to talk more about what is, what the sheriff's office is doing in response to COVID-19.
Thank you, Edgar. Good morning, members of the board. I'll try to make it brief, though I enjoy talking to everybody, especially with social distancing now. It's nice to see people. So for our office, I'll just start, there's a lot of interest in what we're trying to do in our jail. Captain Monica is the jail commander. He's been working with his staff to really ensure the safety of those that are in our custody. That's one of our biggest priorities, is to make sure that we keep the people that are in our custody safe. So they have increased screening of anybody that's gonna be going into the jail and being housed. Really, that starts with the employees in our jail facility. They are also making sure that they're adhering to all the orders outside of work to make sure that they don't bring anything into the jail. So we have some plans in place for that. But we are screening, anybody that's gonna be coming into the jail and be housed is going through a elevated screening process, and they're being referred out for medical evaluation if needed. Programming has been, or what we like refer, we refer to as programming, is where classes in the jail are, have ceased. Visitation has ceased, other than any visits that are maybe illegal in nature. So if an attorney, if someone needs to talk to an attorney, we'll have a heightened level of screening for that, to make that happen. And we've also been working, so our district attorney Candace Hooper and our presiding judge, Judge Sanders, has authorized our office and all local law enforcement, including our state partners, to have more discretion in citations in lieu of housing. So we've, we've changed a little bit of our, of how we're dealing with certain crimes. There were, we were previously not able to cite and release, that we are now able to cite and release, to try to keep the numbers lower in our jail. I've also been asked a few times about what we're doing as far as early release. Our jail facility is going through an expansion. And one of those reasons is it's always very high capacity. So we're pretty well-versed in trying to keep low-level offenders and anybody that doesn't really need to be housed out of custody, because we typically need a room. So I think that's something that we're very good at, and we're continuing to do. As far as the operations side of things, I appreciate the chart and the graphs that are being presented by HHSA. And I just want to say one, a couple things about our role as the coroner and the county. For anybody that doesn't know, part of the duties of the sheriff's office is that our sheriff is also the county coroner. It's not like that in every county, but in this county, Sheriff Thompson is also our coroner. So all of our deputies are deputy coroners. With the COVID-19, with all the implications of COVID-19, you may see the, our staff with a heightened sense of safety when we're dealing with decedents. We're also out of an abundance of caution. We are reporting, so the one death that we have in this county that we're calling a COVID-19 death, we do not have the cause of death on that individual back yet. But out of an abundance of caution and for transparency, really at this point, what we do is we, what we have is we have an individual that passed and also tested positive for COVID-19. At this point, we can't say if they passed away from COVID-19. A lot of people have underlying medical conditions which may be the cause of death. But we're gonna continue to report if we have a decedent that also tests positive. We're gonna report that. But I don't want that to be mistaken with that being the cause of death. It may be a contributing factor. We contract with San, with Santa Clara County Medical Examiner's Office. They make that determination for cause of death. We will then circle back around with Tracy's department and with Lynn Mello, and we'll meet, and with Dr. Martin, we'll make sure that we confirm what the cause of deaths actually are. But I do want the public to know, and it was brought up by our sheriff this morning, that if you do see our deputies donning more protective equipment, that is normal. It's out of an abundance of caution. It's not to instill any fear in the community, thinking that there's any, that every death we're going to is a COVID-19 death. I'm happy to see our numbers are low. We have outfitted all of our deputies that are on the street with kits from Gear with PPE. Our sergeant, Tom Kealan, our detective sergeant, and our MSO, Lisa Ponce, and our new MSO, Angie Rivera, put those kits together for every deputy. So they're all, they all have something in their vehicle in case something, in case they need it quickly. So you may see that more often, and it shouldn't be alarming, it's just out of an abundance of caution. As far as compliance with the order, we've seen great compliance. We've had to go out to correct an error earlier on in this crisis with a notice that was put out to the community from a local resident that ended up being not positive for COVID-19. We've got great compliance from the management where that person was residing. And locally, we've had to contact one business and ask them to cease operations, which they've complied. I don't know if that's exactly going on in the city, but what I will tell you is that I appreciate, again, what Tracy said, that we're, this really should be compliance because of the public health and because of public, because of the safety of all of our friends and our neighbors, not a criminal justice deal. But I will say that if you're one of the people that's trying to figure out the ways that you can get around this, you're probably gonna attract some attention from law enforcement. So if it's, if you're a nonessential business and you don't have business being out, the whole point of this order is to keep everybody safe and not to try to figure out ways to get around it. The last thing that I'll, that I'll mention today is that our district attorney... The last thing that I'll, that I'll mention today is that our district attorney, District Attorney Candace Hooper and her office have pledged that they will prosecute price gouging. And that's something that I know that our, our partners at Hollister Police Department and that our deputy sheriffs, not only in the county, but in our contract city of San Juan Batista are paying attention to. I know for our office, we have nothing to report on that, but in case the public is concerned about that, you can call, contact one of your public safety offices. And even though our lobby is closed, we are fully staffed on the street, our deputies will still respond as they always have. And we have a little bit of a increased presence out there. Hopefully you'll see our, our cars rolling around and our deputies out and about and not in the office. Again, that helps with social distancing to stay out of the office and in their vehicles. But, but having said that, I don't want anybody to think our level of services decreased just because our lobby is closed. However, the deputies have been given the opportunity to try to handle as much as they can, maybe by phone or not in person, but if you do need in-person contact, please request that and we'll be happy to do that. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I do have a question. Actually, I just got an email right now. One of, one of your guys' employer, contract employees at the jail, nurses at jail are begging for supplies, they know they're contracted through CMSB, but it will be reflected barely on us if we can't provide them with masks. Either consider going to the holster, paint for masks. So I just got that email. I guess they're, they're short on the masks at the jail?
So we have a contracted medical provider in the jail that supplies a lot of their own equipment. I know that we have also been fortunate enough with Chris at OES that has really helped out with giving us a lot of protective equipment that we're happy to share. As a matter of fact, our friends at the Hollister Police Department actually gave us some equipment yesterday to help out with that. So I'll check in with Captain Monica and make sure that the staff is taken care of. And I know that we've placed a large order and there's a lot more coming, but that's the first I've heard of anything that may be lacking there, but our office is more than happy to make sure that they're, they're supplied with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. You're out and about, your deputies are out and about and, you know, we hope that people take the order shelter at home very seriously. And do we, at this point in time, see a, a good compliance of that? I know there's not that much traffic on the roads, but is there something that maybe we could, should step up some sort of citation, just to remind people that news travels fast too? And, you know, to show the public that we will enforce the order and businesses, particularly businesses that are not essential, being open. Should we, you know, be a little bit more hard? Or is that something that we, from what we're experiencing right now? I'm, I'm not out and around, so I don't know what the compliance level is. You know, I live in the valley, so I try to, you know, minimize my exposure, but...
Sure. So we have a great relationship with the city council and the city government in San Juan Batista, one of our contract cities. We're no more than a phone call away and I believe that they've been having good compliance. They have a couple code enforcement officers there that are helping out with making sure everything is going okay. As far as in the county jurisdiction, we've only had one instance where we had to go ask a business to comply because it was, it was one of the gray areas, to be honest with you. It was nothing, nothing egregious and it was nothing malicious, it was just misunderstanding. And as a matter of fact, that's one of the ways that Tracy's staff, Daryl, was able to step up and help us out and give some clarity. And then the business was, is completely compliant. And so it wasn't, it wasn't a matter of defiance, it was misunderstanding that's been clarified. I, I have had some good conversations with chief and also from the Hollister Police Department. We've been in constant communication, just to make sure all of our public safety partners are on the same page here locally. I know that they've had, they should probably speak to that on their own, but I just know from my communication with the chief that they have had a couple businesses that are maybe been non-compliant, but I think working with Tracy's staff and with the city police department with code enforcement, I think we've actually seen a lot of compliance. I believe also in our community, being an agricultural community, being an exception, having a lot of manufacturing or businesses that maybe, there are businesses that are not essential in and of themselves, but they support essential businesses. And a lot of our people travel out of county to maybe go to their essential job. So I don't think it's really been a ghost town like people may have expected it to be. It's been nice to see people out biking and running and, and being active when they can. But I think overall Supervisor, we've had fantastic compliance from this community.
Great, that's good news. Thank you.
Thank you, editor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So Peter Hernandez, yeah, I'm just wanting to chime in on Supervisor Batella's comment. I know personally, if you, me and Supervisor Gil had a conversation with about, I want to say sixteen or so businesses, we had the business council on the phone. It was a Zoom meeting, right? So we talked to the business council, the HDA, the chamber, and we, we had a pretty healthy conversation and part of the goal was not just letting them know what the shelter in place was or giving them a little bit of the information they, they hadn't had in front of them, but also giving them the resources or helping them to understand that there are resources and people are working on those resources. So, so I just wanted to kind of chime in, but I think ultimately the businesses themselves want to know what to do. They, they don't fully understand because it's, you know, the legal language is hard to interpret. Every business is different, you know, their models are different. But my main point is engagement, I think, is really, really important right now and I appreciate all those different agencies, the chambers, the HDA, the business council, and oh, and EDC, I'm sorry, Mark Fontes was on the line also. And it was a really good conversation and hopefully more and more, the more engagement we stay with them, then the more where they're going to see the need on how they should comply and ultimately this is the biggest sentiment as well in this together. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Response, Cap?
Not necessarily a response to Supervisor Hernandez, though it was nice to hear from him, but I did leave something out that my boss reminded me of. So the sheriff is listening in, but is not able to be heard, probably technical difficulty. But he wanted to remind the public and everybody that we do have video visitation in the jail. That's something that we actually had, had started before this crisis, so luckily we did that because that's available. So the inmates know that that's available and hopefully the public knows. And if you don't know how to use it, you can call the jail and figure out how to do that. But that's the only thing I had to add from the sheriff.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? No, go to the next phase.
Thank you, Captain. So I'll just continue with, we had a department head meeting with administration and I'm hearing from all the departments of how they're doing operations. It was great to hear that everybody is using technology or being creative of how to meet their needs and mandates and still be operational from a county's perspective. Just to highlight, the jail has a no-touch visitation and we had reached out to the sheriff's office and working with the sheriff early on, dealing with the COVID-19, and he quickly mobilized to be, reduce the, the probability of contact, contacting any COVID-19 through his inmates. Also wanted to highlight that we will be disseminating information to members of the public our new office hours for the meantime and providing phone numbers in the event that those members of the public need to get a hold of those departments and don't need to leave their home on there and they could, we're just a phone call away from providing help and, and services to those, to the public. Do you have any questions from the board or the public?
I, I got a question and it might be a far-fetched question, but I have to say it. When can we start getting data about what the effect COVID-19 has in our local economy?
Great question, Chairman. We are actually in the midst of that right now. We developed a survey that we have put out through our social media channels and sent out to EDC and the chambers and other small business organizations about a questionnaire from small businesses so they can self-identify what economical impacts that they've had. Once we get that statistical data, we'll come back to the board and disseminate that information.
Yeah, because, I mean, let's be, let's be realistic here, folks. In our community, and I'm just talking about our community, not Santa Clara County, Monterey or San Francisco. City Hollister was the first one to implement some kind of quasi-shelter in place. It wasn't, it really wasn't, they don't have a health department, but they were the first ones to start it. And then we followed suit. And then finally, the governor gave some teeth to his language in saying, we have a shelter in place. So now, with all these agencies now working together in a, in a unified method of delivery, I just want to know what is going to start having the effect to our local economy?
Let me just interrupt there. Just for informational purposes, I want to make sure everybody gets the same message. I believe the six counties, is that correct, Tracy? The six county, or seven counties were the ones that first implemented the shelter in place, not the city of Hollister.
I'm not talking about the other county, I'm talking about just our regional.
I'm just saying, but the first people to do this was the counties, okay? I just wanted to make sure we're, we're straight, I just...
But I'm talking about Hollister, San Juan Batista, San Benito County. That's all I'm talking about.
We are providing, we are putting out that survey and we're asking businesses to fill it out and let us know what, what kind of economic impact they've had. And we're sharing that through our social media channels, through all our partners. We'll also be listing that on our website and disseminating that information with the help of our PIO also. Once we get that information, we'll, we'll relay that back to your board about what we've heard from our business community.
Yeah, it'll be good, good to know because then gives the opportunity to start planning for our community down the road. Yeah. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Anymore? Oh, sorry, Supervisor Batella.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're asking for, Mr. Chair, and, you know, one of the things that I want to remind everybody, it was apparent when I was looking at a calendar at home and my wife marked off four days since we did our order and it's only been four days. This is a go-on for weeks and I think we haven't even got to that point where we even know what the economic damage is going to be, much less the, kind of the, the other type of issues that, you know, this virus has brought on to the world. But, you know, one of the things that I, I called a department yesterday and, you know, of course, that's the only way, the lobbies are closed and doors are shut and, but I needed to speak with somebody in one of the departments, I'm not going to say which department either, but I got the message machine. And the message and the list for the, you know, the different employees that you could talk to by the phone was so outdated, I couldn't believe it. None of those people still work for us. And so I think we need to remind our department heads to call their own office and see that the, the listing is current, if we're going to have the public call. And, you know, it's sometimes a problem anyway, but now that we're going to have that, that level of communication, we've got to make sure everything's pretty current and that's a basic thing.
Thank you, Supervisor, and we'll go, and we'll take care of that on our end with department heads. Also, I wanted to share that Mark Fontes from the EDC is also helping those small businesses that have been impacted by the shelter in place with using SBA loans. And also, one of the things that Supervisor Gilio had mentioned about a letter to the state, we'll also be asking for additional help for small businesses that have been impacted through this shelter in place.
Also, I know Congress is meeting as we speak. Once the third part of their stimulus package gets approved, somehow that needs to be trickled down to our community, both in English and Spanish, because you'd be surprised, there's a lot of people out there that actually don't know what it's available to them, such as, you know, parents that have their kids home now because now the schools are closed and the parents are no longer working. So it'll be very important that somehow we relay that information to the community, especially to the Spanish-speaking members of our community.
Are you referring to HR 6201?
All of those, yeah.
Yeah, we, council and admin took a first read of it, is very confusing and we have a lot of questions ourselves. Once we have a better read of it, we'll be working with EDC and see how we can help small businesses, them themselves comply with new regulations of HR 6201.
There is a town hall meeting tonight online with Jimmy Panetta, so you might want, I'll send you the link, you might want to look at that, it's also on my Facebook page and so that might, he might answer some of those questions.
Okay, good, good information. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, Jim?
Oh, sorry, Supervisor Gilio?
I think I got to go ahead, sorry, it's hard to hear you guys. The, just real quick, I wanted to thank Supervisor Hernandez for his leadership. A couple nights ago, he had a meeting with the EDC and brought in a lot of the downtown businesses and it was a great conversation getting that rolling, I really appreciate that, Supervisor, thank you. And number two, our EDC is already, our partnership with them is already paying off. I got to tell you, they worked really hard to get San Benito County listed on the SBA. If you look at the Small Business Administration, federal government website, sba.gov, we're now listed in San Benito County and that was a little bit of a struggle to get that done, but through their advocacy, we're on there. So now our small businesses can apply. Just for everybody listening, I participated in a conference call, you know, and all my days are blending together now, I'm sorry, earlier this week, and essentially small businesses in, in the entirety of California, as long as you are on the website, your county, which we are now, you can apply for a disaster loan, essentially three-point-seven-five percent interest, twenty-year loan or a long-term loan. And really, it's about, pretty much everybody in our county qualifies to apply and then it's whether or not you have the credit where you necessary ability to, you know, get a loan, but there's a lot of relaxed conditions there. So I really encourage all our small businesses to apply right away because what they told us was about a thirty to thirty-five, I believe, business day, not day, business day funding screwed up. So you're looking at about a month and a half to actually get funds in your account. So please take a look at that, all, all the small businesses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you. Supervisor Gilio?
Let me add to that, I want to thank Chris for working on that because I know I had three or four emails into her, asking her to look into that because I received the emails from my constituents. So thank you for the quick response, Chris, from OES.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I appreciate the sentiment Supervisor Gil, and I also wanted to make sure I mentioned that it was through county staff that helped us through our management analysts, Don said that helped coordinate that meeting, so without her, we couldn't have done it and it made it, you know, her organizing the process so that we can have all these businesses, an easy way for them to chime in was awesome. So, but, but on that note, I, I think this should be an ongoing item if we consider, you know, what it would be to have, create like an economic resiliency plan going forward. You know, we have a lot of things to deal with and I, you know, the aftermath of this is pretty devastating, but, you know, in my mind, that's why I think it's a good idea to come up with a strong plan going forward, how to increase revenue streams and, and a lot for efficacy in our, in our, you know, in our, our local government body. So, so all things considered, I think this is, it's a first step, right, the engagement with these businesses, but I know this is going to be an ongoing support through EDC and I just wanted to make mention of a future agenda that we could possibly consider and see what that means. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that's a real good suggestion, maybe a formation of an ad hoc committee to work with our business leaders and, and be a liaison to make sure that their needs are met and, and anything we can do to help sustain them through this very difficult time.
Okay, I'm going to appoint Supervisor Gilio and Supervisor Hernandez as they have started the process and they'll report back to the board. Is that okay, Supervisor Gilio and Supervisor Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
Is that a yes from Supervisor Gilio?
I'm not sure if you can hear me, but yeah, I think, I think I heard that, yes. I'll, I'll call up the staff later, thank you.
Okay, all right, that means half your check goes to Supervisor Hernandez. Okay, all right, I don't know.
I'm, I'm all in, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anything else?
No, I think...
Hey, real quick, I'm not sure, Peter, can you hear the, okay, I'm, I'm having a real hard time hearing him. Are the mics on? I'm just thinking for, for everybody who's listening. I, I can hear him, Supervisor Gilio. I think if anything, maybe if, if, you know, the elected officials could lean forward a little bit, have the mic closer to him in my house, that's my suggestion, thank you.
We will take it into consideration, yep.
Supervisor Gilio, I've, I've taken your comments and we're working on them as, as we speak and we may have some solutions for, for all... speak, and we may have some solutions for, for ongoing for these meetings. Again, I do apologize, we're trying to work with the kinks out and technology and be...
Oh, don't, don't worry about it all. I just wanted to point it out just so we're aware of it, yeah. And I know you guys are working through it. Thank you for, it's actually working very well. I, I'm very surprised actually how well it's working on this end. Thank you.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's, that's more or less our presentation to your board and to the public. I want to thank staff, you know, they have just been doing a tremendous job during these trials sometimes, really. Also, to put such a great presentation together in such a short period of time and putting these meetings together has been just, it's been unbelievable. So I really want to thank staff for all their hard work during this time, as well as just keeping the county moving forward as well operationally because we've still got business to do. And with that, I, I know that you're going to open up the, the session with public comment. I wanted to invite Dulce up to say a couple of words on Zoom etiquette before commenting. Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So before we begin public comment, I'm gonna unmute everybody. Unmute everybody. I ask that on your end, please mute on your side if you are not going to make a comment. Also, before you begin, let's have one person at a time and please state your name for the record.
Hand it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Not happening.
Okay, so it's open, I, again, please mute.
You want to go in there and talk to them?
We can hear you guys.
So if, if you could please mute your line on your end and have one person at a time and state your name for the record, please?
Okay, let me open up the public. Okay, any public comments?
How do you know if there's any public?
Anyone from the public?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, this is Vanessa with the office of State of San Antonio Caballero. Can you make a comment?
Yeah. Yeah.
I just want to say that also, our office continues to be working. We have closed our office to the public and to staff, so all of our staff are working remotely. And again, just, you know, we are here as a resource. We'll be sending out an email to our supervisors as well. Vanessa from San Antonio Caballero.
Yeah, please.
And we want to be there for your...
Is he just dumb or just not a stable guy?
Kayla, I, I apologize. Let me mute everybody, and I am gonna unmute Kayla. Give me one second.
Just drop everything right now.
Yep. So we, we'll be unmuting Kayla.
Due to technical challenges, we are closing public comments for the time being. No, nope. We're closing public comments for the temporary. You can handle it?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, now we will open public comments. Go ahead.
Kayla, I apologize. Everybody's muted except for you. Go ahead.
Okay, no worries. Everyone, this is Kayla from Assemblymember Robert Remus's office. Wanted to reiterate that we're here as a resource for anyone who needs it. And if you're having like a high influx of state-related questions, please feel free to just send an email. We want to get everything in writing so that we can forward your questions to the appropriate agency. But it's the same thing for us. We're kind of working remotely here as best as we can, but answering all calls and all emails and trying to get your questions answered as quickly as possible. So again, here as a resource and any support or guidance really that you all need.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Wasn't hungry after that meeting, I got to tell you.
I don't know if you can hear me. This is...
Oh.
Again, we ask you that you mute your phones if you're not going to make public comment, please?
We're gonna go ahead and unmute all users.
No, it's gonna be the best access ever.
Yes, you know what?
It was like Trump. It was like, it's gonna be the best thing we've ever had.
I don't know if anybody can hear that.
Okay. Dulce? I apologize to the public. We're still having some issues with our communication process. We're gonna temporarily suspend it for today.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, give us some guidance. So what we can do for there, if there are any questions, please email them to the clerk. And we are going to have a, a board meeting next Tuesday. We will be discussing the coronavirus. We'll make sure to post all those questions and have those questions responded to next Tuesday.
Yes, and I really want to thank the staff for trying to work this and facilitate this. I know it's, it's a new technology, and I know we're going to have some of these ups and downs, but I really think, I really say thank you and we'll, we'll get there to the point that it's good.
Yeah, and we're gonna, yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, we're also looking at tweaking this with additional features that Zoom has to address this kind of an issue, so.
Good. All right, let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Peter. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a recommendation. You know, it'd probably be a good, just, you know, as, as, as an encouragement, hopefully, so for a better process is, is having people, you know, know in advance, mail, email in their questions. Maybe we can come up with the process to answer, or at least have, if there is a statement, but for the most part, you know, once the meeting happens, I think that there, there needs to be a good opportunity for someone to state their phone number, and then basically everybody stays muted. That way, that person that's chiming in can state their name along with that phone number and then, and then only that person stays unmuted. Because, yeah, it seems like it's, you know, really, really hard to get everybody on the same thing, so unmute everybody, this is too difficult.
Are there any messages?
Okay, Supervisor Hernandez, we'll take that into consideration. And if any of the supervisors, members of the staff or public feel that your ideas can better facilitate this meeting, we're more than interested to listen.
There's technology.
Is that it? We're done? Okay.
We don't, I'll defer to the chairs, whether we go into closed session, if there's no need for closed session at this time, but I don't believe that there is, we'll just take that item off the agenda.
Okay.
Were there, there were no messages that were received in the chat function that you need to read to the board?
We can open them up if the chair...
Go ahead. We could just, we could just listen to the message, we can't react, correct?
It's just like regular public comment.
The message about Youth Alliance is also updating resources and translating Esmeralda. The point of contact is esmeralda@youthhall.org is needed. Thank you, youthhall.org. If there, if there are homeless youth identified, Alejandra at, I don't know what that is, able to help at Youth Hall. Our phone lines are open and provide Alejandra's phone number, she's bilingual. And that's it.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn as we will not have a closed session today?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.